This morning our guest pastors have a season's block from the post-baptist church pastor.
You would go into work first one. While we're thankful to thank the blessings of which you are the author, we're thankful for freedom, the freedom to pray, to assemble, the freedom to speak, and the freedom to participate in government, and the freedom to pursue habits. While your word teaches us that we are having ordained human governments serve the common good to maintain order and punish wrongdoing. While your word also teaches us to pray for the leaders of our government. So this morning I pray for the wisdom and strength for these county commissioners. Wisdom to understand the weight and responsibility of the offices and trust with them. Wisdom to discern how to serve the interests of people of Taylor County and not their own. Strength to stand for what's right, to use up means standing alone. And strength to do the hard work of leadership. We pause this morning to lift up the people of Dean Hattie's surrounding areas. It's lots have been affected by heavy rain and flooding. Give the residents the resolve and strength to put things back to normal and to be a neighbor of those suffering and hurting alongside them. While we're here today and be with this body as they deliberate, we offer our prayers in the name of our Lord's Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
A pleasant evening to the flag of the United States of America. And with your love, Lord, we stand well-armed, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the prayer.
I want to thank you for that information, sir, and we would love for you to come at any time.
Please give us the call.
And if it's a check, we'll log it in on the calendar in the morning block.
On behalf of you, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. We will go to item three, approval of the amended agenda. It's been amended because we have added nineteen A, the nature of people to discuss the block since the toll road extension project. I've also been asked to table item number nineteen so that the add is need additional information from the applicant. Are there any of the changes of these decisions, the reason, the option to date of agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve is stated.
We have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed sign aye. Motion carries. Bid from public hearings, number four. The board should receive bids for the leasing of two hundred and ninety-six plus or minus acres for the harvesting of salt, palmetto berries, and Taylor County Florida set for this date at nine AM or as soon thereafter as possible.
And so, community members, we have two bids, we have a list on the debt. And one of the bids that ABC Jumping Incorporated, that bid was delivered over years. And I talked to Mark this morning, it was submitted on time, but it did not have the marking on the front, but it was a bid, so it accidentally got opened. But it was closed back up and rewrote on front, so it's not listed as a bad thing. The first bid that opened was ABC Jumping Incorporated from Old Town Florida.
What was it, number eighty-six? What's that? Old Town was ten months?
Uh, yes.
Oh, excuse me.
That was just the company's bid, ABC Jumping Incorporated.
Oh, okay.
Okay, there bid is twenty-five cents per pound. The next one is Blue and Shyler Enterprises LLC from Greenfield. There bid is thirty-three point three percent of the market value.
What does that mean? Anybody have any idea? Do you have any?
I do, it's the market fluctuates up and down. It could be two dollars a pound, or three dollars a pound. And if that gets to the town, it doesn't come down. And they really don't know, so they start marking times that they're pretty soon won't get.
Yeah, and I know that we did have some support comments from one company that did not bid, but they said that they have done something there that a dollar fifty-five, well, anywhere from a dollar to a dollar fifty a pound, and some at a dollar fifty-five a pound. So I would think the twenty-five cent for sure is very low. Do we have time to re-advertise anything?
We do. That would be the time to do. And I think we can be here pretty soon, September the little last.
Do you think it's risky to go in thirty-three points, do we need to risk it?
I would.
You would want?
I would. Go with thirty-three, I would. That way you...
Well, that's not consistent with what we asked. We asked for a price per pound, I'm not, I mean, I know we can consider that.
And that wouldn't, that won't really work, but that's our app.
You can weigh the rate, I argue. Wait, what it may, your rate will hesitate.
I guess we would need to define if that's the price per pound, is that a hard question? Or...
Well, that would be, that's a good question. You know, you can ask them.
I guess my point is if the market value is a dollar fifty-five per pound, and this is thirty-three percent, that's still quite low. And I think it's ostensibly lower than what we said last year. So, um...
Just about fifty cents per pound, yes. What was the bid last, what was the winning bid last year?
We only had one bid, and I probably didn't even see it, but I can't quite recall. It seemed like it was an eighty-something cent per pound, eighty-six or eighty-nine cents.
I know we weighed in it off the year's market before, probably, for not closing it, you know, it's an open round situation.
Well, I mean, I kind of see these people's point. I mean, um, that twenty-five cent, I mean, tell me can't put wrong with that. But the way the other people did was a percentage, and that directly affiliated with the market. Whenever the market ran, so you could expect them to say about a fifty-five or a dollar fifty, when the market may not even rate that much. So, I mean...
They were part of these best three bids, I reckon. I don't know if it's safe to get that done.
We could just re-advertise, and, um, you know, we could advertise it for another, do we... Or we could, I mean, I hate to spend the time to have a big committee meeting and then come back to the board and advise that we want to re-aduate the bids because they're so low.
I'm okay with the thirty-three point three percent myself. Okay, well, the previous year, I mean, next year, if the board agrees to that, then next year we'll be very specific. We, you know, exactly what we want and what we will not, and what we will expect and what we want itself. And then kind of for ourselves, see what the market bear. I mean, oh, we could re-advertise whenever we want to do.
Your word is, you don't want to... You plan, I'm sorry, then.
To double the percentage?
Aye, they don't have a book, can you read?
Yeah, they did our hard work and paid for it. So that would be depending on, we can still have, we can still review the paperwork and make sure that we have everything we need. And then we can bring a contract to the board at the next meeting if you want to award the bid today.
Exactly, if you want to make sure that it's thirty-three and a third of the percentage of the pound, if you want to make sure of that, that we put it in the contract. And then secondly, we need to monitor it, it's like we did last year, to make sure that, um... What you did for it.
Yeah, so just the big committee will clarify, you know, will clarify that, that. And then get back with us at the next meeting. Now, when's this decision, when's this picking start, Commissioner Moody?
I thought of something yesterday on five roof, we buy palmetto berries all day. But they're buying, and then running around here to the legal market. I mean, if the state's got involved, because now it's not just anybody can care about that. You got that paperwork, where they came from, and that kind of thing.
Okay, so maybe, maybe next year we might want to go after this earlier, so that we're not right here at the last minute, and if we have any kind of issues, we have to redid, that would give us ample time to redid. Well, I thought last year, it seems like this even was a little bit later, that we weren't ready to take until maybe October.
Last year, the, um, the bays were later than on this year.
I guess we could start earlier in the market, this is new to us. Yeah, I mean, this is new to us, so I understand that. So the big committee, um, I mean, already waiting, because I feel like we need the US and all that, we need to be very hopeful, myself and Martha Jordan. Okay, okay, uh, thank you.
You have a motion. I move.
What, what's the motion, Mr. Murray?
I thought that y'all were going to accept this bid. Contingent, yeah, that's why I'm playing, we need to say this, um, completely, I think. You made a motion, different motion?
They had made my...
I made, don't, but I'm... Contingent on, number one, that it's five pounds, right? Yes. Okay, and that's the big committee has recurred, and they've done everything pursuant to the bid. Is that your motion? I move. All right.
Okay, yes.
I'll say.
All right, so we have motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed sign aye. Motion carries. Item number five, the board to hold a public hearing set for this date at nine and five AM or as soon thereafter as possible. To hear an application for special events permit, Mud Box, to be held on September the twelfth through the sixth date twenty nineteen, and October the seventeenth through the twentieth twenty nineteen, seven AM to seven PM, as submitted by Iron Horse Mud Ranch. Now, if I was looking at this agenda item, um, the application states that they're expecting more than a thousand attendees. It's located at eight nine 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 South US nineteen in Neshere. Every item on the checklist looked like it had been checked out, you know, by Danny Riner, is that correct? Yes, ma'am. Now, are you here to represent the item?
Yes.
You want to come forward? Good morning.
Good morning, Rick, how y'all doing?
All right.
Ricky won't have another one on, the first one in September will just be ACVs only?
There won't be big trucks out there, do you? No, 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 nobody, only. Any questions?
There's now all the public hearings.
Yes.
On the clock, so, um, I think, is, um, this is a public hearing, so I will open it for the public. If there's anyone here who wishes to come and speak, um, concerned with this, please come forward. No one? Okay, I'll cause a public hearing here, and ask if there is a motion to approve this application.
Motion to approve, exactly.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed sign aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll have very much credit, I'll leave you.
Item six, we want to continue a public hearing set for this date at nine ten AM or as soon thereafter as possible to consider adoption of a restful reason for right-of-way abandonment as requested by Joe H. Anderson the third for portions of First Avenue Northwest, Second Avenue Northwest, Third Avenue Northwest, and Fourth Street Northwest, located in Dean Hattie, Florida. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, with attorney Michael Osteen, I represent Mr. Joe Anderson the third. Here's representative Fred Wimby, Mr. Farmer, their land development supervisor. Is the board familiar with these roads? Or should I take a minute to explain? I don't want to bore the board with that, but...
Well, we're a public speaker, if I think, go ahead, give us a quick overview.
This is First Avenue. If I pass that around, I mean, none of these roads are existing other than... Was that the fourth, is the only kind of existing road? There's two pictures of third, these roads were never developed, and they go out into the marsh. So they really no road there, they're flatting roads. And here's a map, you want to pass it around? So the road of issue is one, two, three, and four. And this is the marsh, and this is the river. No one will be landlocked, I don't know if there's any opposition or not, but Mr. Anderson has, I've got contracts in the file, vacant land contract, contingent on this board doing that, he plans on purchasing the remaining land around that, which I can share with the board too. The county does own a piece of property on the marsh behind this, where we want to close the road. We'll be more than happy to get a right-of-way, even to the public, whatever we need to do, but we are asking for these roads to be closed. And again, these roads that we're asking to be closed, first, second. First, second, and third are not even roads. And Mr. Chairman, I know it shows lots there, but this is the marsh. These roads are not even existent at all.
And that's on First, Second, and Third Avenue Northwest.
Correct, there's, I mean, it's flat, but they're, it's marsh, it's wood. Again, these disreverent property owners, I think I've read one letter from, I can't recall her name, I think she got confused about having to walk around the block, but my understanding is she got the property mixed up. So she was thinking some other road she couldn't walk around, and that was not correlation of what we're asking. Uh, the only other opposition I know of is... And he was thinking he was going to be landlocked, but nobody will be landlocked about this. What I, what my position is, if you let Mr. Anderson close these roads, I think he's going to make valuable improvements there, going to increase the tax base of Taylor County. I can assure you of that. He's going to put something nice there through regulation. The road is not existent. And again, it's the vacant land contract to buy these two lots of land here is continued up on the board. He already own down here. He's going to buy this, this, and this with the contract if these roads are closed. And again, these roads go directly to the marsh, so it's not going to be any one any good, and it's not like the county's going to maintain them at all. It was just flat and way back when Dean Hattie first come out. And, uh, again, y'all see pictures of them, it's just wooded area. But I would ask for the board to go ahead and say...
This is an existing road?
That's the only existing road that you can drive down, yes.
Is there any right here that's a road?
Wait, the road, you go down, this is the condos here.
This is a condo.
Right, and this is the road that separates those.
This part of the cliff is what you're asking for.
Yes, so if you close that, half of that road would go to...
Condos.
To condos, and the other half over to these property owners. And these roads are not existent at all, they're just flat.
The one road is just...
Just is the only one that you could drive down, yes.
Is there a boat rent here?
No, 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 they use it as a boat rental, it's not actually a...
The condos have some other land being going out now. Somebody...
It's not a rent that you can put in.
It's not a concrete ground, but people put it in there.
That's right, I don't know.
I don't be in that land.
No.
I think, I think across the country, they're working, I mean, that's, you know, but...
It's not actual designated over there, it's just they put in there. So, and are you an alternative, if you don't want to close this particular road at the time, and the alternative, I would at least ask you to close the three that's non-existent, then we could revisit the others, and have a later base.
That was going to be my question. If that road was fourth street, was kept open, and then it's First, Second, and Third Avenue was closed, that would still enable him to do what he wants to do?
That would help tremendously, anyway.
Well, what's your opinion of them closing the what the...
The amount of traffic that comes in there, in and out, they trash the place. Down, down, down.
I remember from the grave going to do anything, they didn't even mention they closed the rest of them. I thought, there ain't none, but if people go down there, and they sort of trash it out, and they come down all time tonight, and tell you what people down there tell me, and they interfere with the people, the condos, I'd say that.
They don't, they don't, there's tall shells there, the rings, after the crappy dad's clothes down.
I went down there, it's like for a bunch of vagabonds ago, I went down to the other side of the... And people just go in there and trash it, we found a bunch of needles, beer cans, whiskey bottles. It's where people go and do things that the public wouldn't typically ordain.
Well, would you come up, Mr. Secretary? Once you finish your brief presentation, then I'll open it up for the public hearing, and then you can come forward and state your name and address and tell us all about it.
You have any questions, man? If anybody's familiar, I'm here in, I'm always across city, I work with Mr. Bishop, good, we know each other. But, again, the three roads that show us they're non-existent, again, I probably don't beat that dead horse. Then we got the one, we saw the homeowners association, or Mr. Farmer has. They're not in our position, they would like to keep, close, I understand it, because the residents have a lookout back at night and see all these people, these crappy daddies and that are having late night parties, so. So, you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those, but if not, I'll give the board, Mr. Farmer, if he has anything to add.
Well, hold on, just a minute, you're done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, I do want to go to our county administrator. We did have two letters of opposition. One was from, I think, the lady that he referenced. And have we received a subsequent, a letter from her stating anything different than what? This letter says, I have not, have you seen?
No, no quarter of any.
Okay, if you will share with us the two oppositions again. Thank you, sir.
Your question. I am eighty-six, twelve years old, cannot drive to attend. Do not agree, do not close streets. As old folks like to walk around the block, and won't be able to if you close it. If you want to close from Second Avenue Northwest and corner of Fourth Street going south, go for it. Not from Fourth Avenue to Second Avenue, Fourth Street West, and stay open to square block, back to my home. All neighbors, white, and Danny is it?
Not so others.
So others, agree.
Yes.
Thank you, Ethel Tapping. And then we did receive some emails from Mr. Mallory. First email read, I received the attached letter and map dated July eighteenth on July eleventh, proposing the closure and abandonment of portions of Fourth Street Northwest, First Avenue Northwest, Second Avenue Northwest, and Third Avenue Northwest. We spoke by phone on seven fifteen nineteen concerning this issue. My sister Sarah Informan and myself, Normandy Mallory Jr., own parcel ID one hundred seventy-one dash zero zero zero, directly to the west of Fourth Street West and First Avenue. This parcel has been in my family for over a hundred years. Closing those streets would remove the eastern access to our property. I object in the strongest possible manner to closing the street and denying us ready access. I am not familiar with the abandonment process, please divide to my eastern and southern council. And then we received an additional email from him. Um, he has a physical disability and is unable to attend. Uh, and an email from myself, it's been December, thank you for the information you sent me. I still have a few questions. My sister and my property have not listed as adjoining properties. Clearly, our property has let, and the roads were requested to be abandoned. And then he states the petition, and, um, that he received in his letter. And then goes on to say, clearly abandoning the roads impacts or eliminates the eastern access to our property. And then he goes on to give us some evidence on it.
Did we, did Danny or anyone go and verify? Danny, would you come up, I want to ask you, have you verified that this would inhibit him from having access to his property?
I haven't gone to the site, no.
But on the map, can you tell?
Uh, on the map, it appears to be on Marsh and Westland. Doesn't look like he's a constructor of roads there anymore. But his property definitely does, but the end of one of the roads needs to be questioned.
But then, even though he couldn't build anything now, that's a question.
Well, I'm speculating, I'm not going to walk in there.
But he could not get through his property there without costing someone else his property, right?
Now, there are two routes of ways come from the north that has come through this block.
So he wouldn't be landlocked, he wouldn't be able to get in there.
He would still have two rightways through this block.
By the way, he's stating that this would be, deny him access to the eastern portion of his property. One, 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 okay. Now, I'll listen to the floor for the public hearing, and anyone that would like to come forward, state your name and address.
Scott Farmer, I live in nineteen, Old Town Florida, Austin, Michigan. The guy that's always just talking about, he has got two access lanes to the north to come in, I think, mainly to be existent, I want to be sure of them with his map. I think the same with the file of him as well as the county, every day that access to their file, they can move, they can welcome him. He can build the road, he can build it, but I don't see where he... This is all papers there, like the other than that one piece of the, uh, road who was mentioned in here between up and the condominiums, that runs down to that little canal that... Probably many of that's been from earth land, these are canal privately owned. The people that are using it should have permission, company and association to be using. And it's over. The county road parts, it basically fell in the canal, it washed away. At one time, I think, he used to drive the river, but since then, it's not. I don't, I've just always, just much of it's on paper, I don't have a whole lot of it, and it's pretty PC in my mind, and I understand why people complain. And I think like Mr. Wimby says, the woman may have been a little confused. So I can't walk in the other road, I'm not walking. That's all I...
Okay, thank you.
Jim Zerberich, Dean Hattie, Warren. I know that Fourth Street property real well, I was on the vote grant committee. You guys have to remember the history, the canal was dug illegally. I suppose have good intentions, everything they do is always first class. But they want to get that canal, I would think. Because that's going to be river access. The canal has already been dug, even though it was dug illegally, you can, with improvement, make access to the river. I drove down during this rainfall, during this flood, I was able to drive out and be on the side of that canal. Now, the other piece of the property, I just don't want to see us not be able to get to the conservation land that we got. And by the way, we got that conservation land from the San Bo two W canal in the middle of the night. I got forty-two years with Dean Hattie, I had no idea they didn't have the right to do that. Everybody's all good. Finally...
Finally, and I think y'all remember that, Malcolm? Okay, we looked at it as a boat ramp site, it didn't sit, you know, we were looking at everything. But this is a particular piece of property, it's valuable. You can't just shit rid of a piece of property that has river, water access. You keep it mowed and, uh, it would look a lot different if it was mowed.
I mean, I've been down, over down, walked it all out, looked at it when I slept on it, I thought it was...
Are you particularly talking about?
Fourth street, yeah, the road has actually erupted. The other issue, let's focus, we have more to say. This is river access. I'm still trying to get over the main street, you have to vote, no one will close main street. It was a very valuable piece of property, and I would like to see a tax, what do you think? If we did abandon this property, what is it going to mean to the county or tax residents? The last time when we closed main street, we didn't even know, but a great value of property, Bruce hasn't even gotten to that point yet, not till after the fact. So we did abandon main street, okay, I wasn't that meeting, my fault. I, uh, but we never closed roads in Steen Hatchie, other than little right of ways, alleys and things like that, just made obvious sense, or too much. But, uh, that one got behind a lot of people at Steen Hatchie. This is a, uh, maybe this one needs to be done at, in Steen Hatchie, the fourth street. Now, the other right of ways punching through, I never like to see the county give up anything. I think everybody in the state's borders, if I ever missed a county, is always your dreaded giving something away. If you get, you know, your tax base, or whatever you're first to, but fourth street's a different animal. It's dead, it's right of the river, it's got a canal that's been dug, that if you go to the core of engineers, and these folks will be able to. They're well-connected, they do everything first class, so mitigate it, so they're gonna have a canal, uh, to the river. And so it's a winfall, and I'd just like to see the county give something, or if we pursue a thing. And if I, uh...
So, uh, so just so that I understand, you're okay with first, second, and third avenues abandoning that, but not which fourth street? Is that, did I read that right?
Uh, the thing, I would say that, uh, I'm never against the county giving up any property. But, that, I'm not gonna comment, other than that, that I hate to see them give up anything. Let's see, I just don't wanna see our conservation land not have access to it. Now, they, they said they looked to make sure we had access to it. You can come around the backside of it, that sixty-two acres, I think that's where they, right, sixty-two? Um, and remember the mitigation and everything out of there, the ugly, ugly situation down there, the local folks in town. And so, uh, but it's fourth street, here's the fight, major concern.
Okay, thank you. You can, uh, uh, what's the line, if, if this board decides to close it? And then, um, surrender third, second, and third avenue to, to, you know? And they're saying that, you know, we would grant access, uh, would it be that in, in some form or other, is that?
And we, and we agree with that, uh...
Okay, anybody else, yes, sir?
My name is Jackson Lively, I'm on the condos that got breached. I'm also the, uh, president of the homeowners, and, uh, for years now, at one time or another, every single condo owner is to blame for me? About the riff route coming down that road, and, uh...
We hear it.
Uh, I'm gonna call it fourth avenue, I don't know what the real number is.
Fourth street.
Fourth street.
Fourth street is the one that runs right into the little, uh, I don't know what you call that, slough, that's there in front of us. Um, uh, all times of the night, we got people in and out of there, we can have things stolen out of our boats? Where people will park over there and come in that way, because we have cameras on the other, on our entrance. Uh, we're in favor of it being closed due to the fact of what it does, uh, um, and I don't mean just in a bad way, but just not being policed. Uh, there's folks in the canal there that, that think, we've had gaps, cans that are floating, where if you go out there right now, you'll see that there's posts? And, uh, light vests and everything that's just floating, uh, nobody polices it, and, uh, we called several times, even I have? About, uh, you know, getting surveillance out there. Uh, we've had people claim to me that they're out there cooking meth at night, uh, so it would really help for them to be able to, uh, close that off? Uh, and, uh, it helps us, so we're in favor of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come and speak to this issue, yes, sir?
And we're twenty-nine-one, we're required to see Hatchie, our, uh, discussion on fourth street. That canal suspended quite a while, uh, people are using it, they have used it for over twenty years. They launch, they leave their boats there overnight at times. Uh, I would hate to see that road closed and the citizens deny use of an access to the river that they've been using for so long. Uh, um, second avenue, that road at times in the past has been mowed. It is an access to the one end of the sixty acres that the county owns. They were giving that on the elephant in return for tax advantage. Right after the county accepted that property, a group of us in Steen Hatchie engaged in, uh, engineer type persons? To make drawings of that and propose it to the county as a festival fairground site. If you close second avenue, you're coming off that access, that end of that. There is an access to which is in north of fifth avenue, but the plans that were drawn up include both accesses.
And now, the, the fifth avenue is a good access for us?
Well, it's another street. It's one that's...
But it's an access.
It is access to one end of the sixty acres. Uh, you, if you did weigh with second avenue, you would make the cut, have them want that possibly infused as a festival fairground area? More congested. Uh, with the comments on fourth street and the ramp and, uh, people using it. Other areas in Steen Hatchie have, have the same problem, people having parties in some fourth street and a crime watch area. We talked to the sheriff, he's been very upfront with us, and he had taught that activity, once he, once he started to walk into the building. I would recommend and hope that you do not close fourth street and you do not close second avenue for the reasons I stated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else which is to come forward and speak concerning to this? I... Okay, um, I'll ask the board for your, uh, input.
What I feel like, if you close all of them, I'm just, I'm getting down there and walking every bit of it out, looking at the wood canal down there, turn around, see the tracks and things. It really looks like to turn around now, but you can get stuck down there the day before dark, if you back off edge of the race. Uh, I'd rather see Mr. Anderson build something nice there and put something on the tax road, but that's my thing. But I know he can deal with it a little first class, I can deal with building, I know it'll be first class, but, yeah, that's why I'm at with it. We don't, we talked about this year ago, when we got that property given to the county? And nothing ever been done all these years, but, I mean, fourth street? You can't drive a car down it, it's done, you can drive a truck down there, if you got people that are old in the road before they're lying. I went down there in the mid of the night, and went down to the mid of the day, we sleep, I drove down there and walked it all out before dark, and they just, the rain started. And, uh, there were two women that were dancing before all that flood. And it's just, uh, I'm in favor of, of abandoning the road, so...
Okay, is fourth street maintained by us, is it supposed to be maintained?
I, I don't think it's something to be maintained.
So, do we have a ground there that's not owned and maintained by the county?
May I, oh, sorry.
Do we have a ground there that says not owned or maintained by the county?
I don't think it is.
If it's in that white, definitely needs to be okayed, straight and stuffy.
It's not maintained, I can promise you, not, and they not been allowed.
Yeah, but my question was, are we supposed to be maintaining it?
It's likely supposed to be on the count, something like two acres, one extent, and there are two there, you know, that, that's never said. I know Mr. Anderson's probably a smart businessman, I know where he, I don't know when he came, but if he's dead big? You would ask him, if that was his property, would he give it up? That's, now, this man don't give up, just give it away. He might contribute for something, but for us as a county, and the other people who are playing there, they do not want it to be closed. And the people that don't say anything don't want it closed, we're supposed to look at this damn office. Mr. Joe Anderson, I'm pretty sure he's a, a smart man and a good businessman. If you ask him, would he do this? See what he says. I don't know how much land we're talking about, we talking about one acre, what, two hundred thousand dollars, or we talking about, uh, uh, two lots, fifty, about fifty? Well, how much land we talking about, we five acres, is that what you're talking about? Nobody seems to have an answer. Yeah, that's thirty-seven bucks.
I, I have the answer if you want it.
Okay, yes, how many are there?
A little bit accurate, but we got, it's, it's gonna buy it first avenue, seventy foot wide by four hundred ninety feet long.
Four hundred ninety, okay.
Uh, second avenue is seventy foot wide by five hundred feet long. Third avenue is seventy foot wide by four hundred ninety-eight foot long.
Four ninety-eight? And, and this is in the mark, I, I took the picture of it.
Third, your road.
Now, they know the fifty roads, it's just flat, but, but we're talking about acres, unfortunately, which there is a road.
There's four that's almost not even taken out of that.
And it is, the area of question is seventy foot wide by six hundred fifty-five foot.
You're talking about two acres and a half?
Oh, but, but that's the dimensions of... Okay, yeah, and that's what we need to know, the paper gets captured that too. I, I don't know how many acres that you would buy, from this county, you just give, do you? Would the county, you know, whether you give it two acres or somebody else to give it?
Well, I do know they talk, any tax can be a pay on it, and I know what Mr. Anderson put there will generate Taylor County more tax revenue than they've ever seen, is what I do know, sir. I, I know he's that kind of businessman, I'm not being disrespectful, but I can promise you there'd be more tax revenue in Taylor County as a result of this, that's what I can promise. Ain't no argument about that, and it'd be more money in your budget as a result of it. I, that's, that, that's just a fact, and all women, I, not a woman, everyone will be getting up.
Yes, but, I, I, and I'm being disrespectful, I'm taking that, but I, I was, I want the public to understand, not giving anything up and putting dollars back in the county, it wasn't for this. A lot of dollars, yeah.
Based on the luminous amount of calls that I've had, had a whole day, everybody is in opposition to this. My view on this is, no offer has been made to the county, not a dollar, a million dollars, they want to take this one. Now, once we give up this land, we no longer have the money, we no longer have access to it. If we sell the land, once we spend money, now we have money, money or the land. The public wants taxes to put that land for a reason. If I had heard one person that was a student, other than representatives, I had to have one person comment that it's a fool's idea. I go back in there, and I saw people using that, people around the world. I've been on the ground in there five days, and I go back where you were, Jim, back in that area, that we never saw, going away. I, for one, am not forgiving up other plans, unless we're building a hospital, or a school, something like that. If you direct, public plans is a private entity all the way, we're wrong, and that's why we want, thank you.
Mr. Anderson, you want to start?
I can't add much to this discussion, I can see it either way. I have, uh, not a great appetite, given the length of fourth avenue, and it's, as I said, for the water. I can live, given the reason, when the second person?
First, second, third?
First, second, third.
The only reservation I have about that, that Mr. Zerberick pointed out, that the second is a road that goes through the sixty... Something I could just carry on, and we got some help, and then I hear Mr. Charlie can use, that's not a road. When, is it a road or is it?
Which one are we, South Second Avenue?
Yeah, second street or second avenue has been moved in the past, that has been moved by the residents in there, for access.
They're not the residents, are they?
No.
That you think?
No, the residents that are west of there have access through it.
So, I, I guess most of the pool would have dropped it.
Actually, no.
The county has a lift station there also for sewer, the water department.
Nevertheless, this is your dilemma, I'm gonna let this horse beat itself, it's not being utilized, it's marshland, not paying any revenue to this county. You want some revenue, I believe that Mr. Anderson would be, if you wanted to put it up for sale, he would try to purchase it, he's not, he doesn't ask me to abandon the road. I don't believe you have any problem with doing a fair bid on it, but right now, currently, it's not generating anything for Taylor County. Or revenue wise.
Jim, you mentioned on this section, where is the roof section?
It's right there at fourth street and second avenue, and Mark can speak, Reverend, he's here for the water, but that's the lift station right there. And, uh, unless I'm wrong, Dan, but it does sit on that right of way going over the conservation land, doesn't it?
I had said some of those fourth street and second avenue, right away.
Would first avenue and third avenue help Mr. Anderson with what he wants to do?
Well, first and second.
First and third?
Yeah, that's in the map, yeah. Here's the fourth, that's the one that you can drive down.
Right.
So, Mr. Anderson owns them here, these two is contingent on these three roads being abandoned.
Fourth, second, here's second avenue right here, right here.
But we could get these three here, would get the pay of benefit, and these are, and this is the only drive here, brother, I'll set pictures around of the other, you can't drive down this one, this one, or this one.
Okay, but if he got, if he had, uh, first avenue, that would be here with all of this that he owns? And then, if he had, if he had third avenue, that would get him access to get, would, would, uh, if we kept, Lord, if we kept fourth street? And second avenue, we would still have access to the sixteen acres that were donated, and plus it would still help with that. They may not get anything anyway, but, and then we'd have to decide if we wanna give it ourselves, uh, that would be up, up to the board, um...
Can we sell it?
No.
You can sell a road up again? The seller's all saying...
No, but, then, then it would have to be, uh, given, given from that, but then that's just what we decide to do it. Uh, but as far as fourth avenue is concerned, sir, you were talking about all the stuff that goes on down there? Uh, this, I don't particularly want to, uh, give up a road? Because my reason would be, it's a, it's a problem area, this needs to be addressed by our sheriff's department?
Law enforcement.
By law enforcement, and let them take care of that, rather than to potentially close it off, because we've got problems down there. I am concerned about this being an access point for the, the business, uh, so...
Don't we already have the boat, the boat ramp right up the road?
We need to, we need to get, and we're, we're in the process now of looking for, uh, the... We need to, we need to get, and we're, we're in the process now of looking for, uh, to put in a special boat ramp, and, and I know parking is an issue here, so it may not be, we could do anything there with, you know, our, um.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but don't y'all just seventy feet down that way? Isn't that all you want?
I thought the roadway is all around.
Yeah.
Okay, and what I'm, what, the point is that they're coming.
So, you come up here?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, they're coming on our property to turn around, they leave trash, I mean, it's, it's not just a, uh, it's just a dead end into that little fluke, and it's low tide, you can't, I mean, it's, there's dirt there, I mean, you can't get in and out. Uh, so, my only thing is, I'd like to see it closed, because it would stop all the people from coming down there, leaving trash, doing all the things that they're doing that they shouldn't be doing, uh, the county's not maintaining the road at all.
It is not on our list of maintained roads, I, I'm assuming it is not?
No.
Straight, it's not, it's not rocks, it's just a dirt road?
Yeah, like you said.
It hasn't been graded in years, years, it hasn't been like.
Yeah.
But we don't maintain alleyways.
So, if you don't keep it, you need to keep it, and that means you need to be in there and, and, I don't know about paving it, but at least take care of it and, uh, mow your right ways, uh, because it's just grown up now, and it's a nice highway for somebody to come in there and park, and then they just jump out of the fence and jump right in. Uh, so, um, I, I just think that for our benefit, it'd be better if it was closed altogether.
I certainly, I, I do understand that, and I, I do understand that the task that goes on and some of the activities that go on, I understand, and I am sympathetic with your, um, with your, with your issues.
And there's, there's areas, I mean, for us, for people to get on the river, I don't want to say that, I'm trying to keep people from getting on there, but, uh, why, I, I think they can leave their boats there. I mean, there's towns, where there's four, five boats in there, they're just tied up, and then it, when, when the tide goes out, they get stuck in the mud, and when the tide comes in, they sink, and then the stuff in the boat floats out into the, and nobody releases that.
And we have any, on, on this, you can't leave your boat, uh, like that somewhere? And then we have it posted at our boat ramp, because there's no overnight parking allowed, um, we would, come over to Mr. Meyer, we'd, um, park it on the right way, if that's considered overnight?
Well, it's, it's, one of the things that happened is, in fact, that it's a natural drinking, um, that's a, there's a federal law on that. Well, yeah, I, I understand the guy, uh, got charged with a criminal offense, wouldn't blow this, an ethical thing.
I'm just gonna bring up one last matter, and I'm gonna shut my mouth and go back across the river.
Yeah.
They, 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 they never, uh, placed down every chance to put a boat ramp in the park, so, I just want to make the first clear left, if the county ever wanted to put a boat ramp there, it's not a position to put a boat ramp. As far as the land that the county owns behind that, it will not be land, it is still a susceptible location to give to the county property to donate, if you want to walk out in that marsh and bog up to your, to your belt, that, 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 that person. So, I want to be clear, this is marshland behind it.
We got it.
All right, we more have to see it than that.
Um, Mark, what happens, what happens? So, what the county needs to do, and what you need to do, is that we can come together, negotiate, we got that seventy acres on the other side, let's give them, have them, as they're developing back here, let's develop a piece and utilize the seventy acres, which they may be willing to do something with, where we could maybe get some access on the seventy acres, which is on the other side, give them that. They got the equipment, they got the tools, they got the manpower, come together and put something together, why not?
Is that something that the board would be, and, and table this, and to have some, something like that? To, to, you know, the fifty acres that we already have donated, to try to work some kind of deal well, is that? And we might have the appetite for that, okay?
I, I, I have to tie it up.
...there that they wouldn't make a parking lot for a boat, a lot closer than sixty acres. They got it mowed, cleaned up, it's high enough to make a parking lot out of it.
Yes, I agree with that.
And if you were gonna make another boat round there, you would, you wouldn't want people walking all the way to sixty acres. Because what they were doing that seventy foot ride, where they put trucks and freighter and lock the road, if they only had seventy foot, you can't overcome such a big boat further than trucks around them, so you wouldn't want kids.
No, we don't wanna call this issue for the children in the back.
That's what I was about.
With that, so.
But I'm trying to say, you know, you talking about that.
Okay. Let me scroll around some ideas and I'll come back and maybe just get back on the agenda without putting it back on for a vote. And let, let, let me put the thought to us with what, what we learned today, just what we thought, really, I appreciate you entertaining our thoughts. And let's see how we can come together and benefit everybody.
Okay, here's what I'm gonna do then, I'm gonna put this on as an agenda on workshop meeting. And then maybe you can come, I can use spoken with Mr. Anderson and, and maybe fast enough and get together, and then come together in a workshop to see if we figured out a win-win for everybody.
Is that, is that scheduled already or something?
Well, but I mean, the workshop is on the twenty seventh, if that's not enough time, we could do it in September.
Yeah, but probably better.
So what is the workshop on the day?
I thought it should be any pretty regular.
September twenty fourth, um.
I think everybody, all commissioners need to go down there and write it out so we can look at it really.
Yeah. But again, I just wanna make sure that everybody, we're not gonna take anything out of the play on that one, that I don't want that to set to the, well, I believe we can't go together and we'll be able to.
I believe we can work, work together.
Well, maybe four.
September twenty fourth, and I will put, we'll put y'all, uh, we'll put this as the first item on the agenda.
I'll be y'all on the twenty fourth. Well, he has a question. You, you can be here. This farmer, he can be here, my pleasure.
It's evening meeting, I'm on it.
Okay. It's six P M.
We can talk.
What, what day of week?
It's a Thursday. Twenty six, twenty six, twenty six.
October twenty second. I'm only getting kind of school. We got our date on Tuesday.
I believe it'll have Tuesday.
We said it's October twenty second, that I gave you a phone, I'll be here.
Whatever y'all wanna do.
October twenty second. I, I'll be at it.
If you want us close home at that moment, that's fine. October twenty second?
I'll be on October twenty second.
That's my birthday, isn't it?
That is, huh? That's your birthday, wasn't it? Is that a evening meeting or a morning meeting?
When we end up most, you know, we have to be.
I wanna be at that.
Okay, but we can't do it October twenty second, so we have to consider that very interesting.
Well, if I got two, you know, you're about to suggest, and that gives you enough time.
I just won't be here, neither will you, because of that one.
Maybe, maybe it'll be later down.
Uh, September twenty second, September twenty second.
Good boy. Good boy. You go. I think we have a bit of farmer, a bit of get together, be here.
September twenty fifth and one at six P M.
He didn't vote.
Okay, we got it.
Now, that may work out, we can close or anything there, or we can talk.
Right.
Well, we may, we may as well present you with my ideas, yeah.
And then we, we can vote on something that the next week we were scheduled, we'll be, if that's what you're talking about.
Absolutely. And that could be October twenty second, when I can be here.
No, that would be a workshop, it'd be a regular.
A regular.
Okay, come at, you know, if they're on table with what they're supposed to hear, it's gotta be a time and a date certain, it's not what they have to be advertised.
Well, why don't you put it on now and then?
Because we have a meeting workshop on the twenty fourth, so it would be the first meeting on October.
First meeting on October, regular meeting on October.
What day is that?
October seventh. October seventh, that's the next week.
Uh, morning meeting.
That's a Monday at six P M.
I like that. October, I, I can leave that.
You drop me at seven?
October seventh.
No, we're gonna advertise it for that.
I'll be.
That's not, that's not.
Remember, we're gonna advertise it.
You might have to, because you said your first day. Okay, so you're gonna need to set the time, you know, so you can parse, I'm looking at the senior calendar.
October seventh at sixteen.
We don't have any say, say more, six, sixteen? Six, yes.
On the seventh, 'cause the workshop is September.
Twenty fourth at six, P M.
All right, and I told Mr. Bishop, he contacted my office, I'll bring that up while I'm here, we, uh, I'm, I'm the county attorney for Dixie County, and we're having a workshop, I believe Mr. Bishop told y'all, and, uh, I, I asked my board, y'all all welcome to come, it's to do with the, to add the lore.
Mm, 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 it's September.
September, at the September, of course, uh.
It's September at one thirty on the fifth, remember, I told y'all about that now.
And what time to be there?
Okay, that, that, and my board is welcome, y'all, it's just a presentation, so.
It's at, at, at one thirty, I'm the same age, um, and it's a workshop, and I believe, uh, the understanding that somebody in the neighborhood firm is gonna come and discuss the dues and don'ts and advantages and disadvantages of September seventh. It's a, it's a learning, uh, time for us all.
Me too.
Yeah.
All your say, before. What does that mean?
It's all it is.
Six twenty four, how many are there, Commissioner?
I thought I had, thank you for your attention, and, uh, appreciate talking this time, so good.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, maybe you're listening, thank you, that was a very pleasant, uh, October seventh, it's the top end, and it's like an old workshop, it's a nineteen forty six.
Oh, it is, thank you.
We have a bunch of committees ahead tonight, um, second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion? If not, all residents say aye, all opposed sign sign, motion period, consent, I have discussed through sixty. Is there a motion to, uh, approve it, consent, aye?
Aye.
You said, uh, that we have a motion, want to make sure that second by Commissioner Murphy, any further discussion? If not, all residents say aye, all opposed sign sign, motion period, public request, number sixteen, Mark Reddlin, General Manager, Big Ben Warren, forty. Fifteen is, is one of the, um, is part of the consent column.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, so I'm gonna say, all right.
Yeah.
All of this is back to keeping us engaged, y'all already ready to give that to us.
But I didn't realize that was possible, it's in the song, September seventeen.
Yes. Okay, sixteen, Mark Reddlin, General Manager, Big Ben Warren, forty, to appear to present twenty nineteen, twenty budget.
Um, that's much, it's in the back, but we basically, uh, the district company approved their budget, um, they, my board has approved it, um, we really hadn't, we hadn't raised any rates, we stayed the same, um, financially, we're in pretty good shape, uh, basically what we did. The revenue number, I think we're gonna be about to change, didn't really change anything, I just shuffled some money around at different points, to make it, uh, where we needed money, got a lot of repairs and stuff that came out that we gotta get done, but, um, we just need a motion to approve. Is there any questions?
Any questions, for anyone, is there a motion to approve? Okay, yeah, motion, they're set.
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Moody, all residents say aye, all opposed sign sign, motion period, sixty.
Um, just on that flat, so that, these guys got, they can get stuff done, and the county doesn't, we don't have money.
Right.
That sixty acres, they can get something, they can get something over there.
I think that was the excellent.
And, I mean, we really, it's there, it's useful, we need to make the money, and, uh, four days, it may have.
Great idea, I hope you're at the workshop. I'll be at the workshop, it's, uh, September twenty fourth at six.
I'm gonna talk to you guys.
And that's, that's what we're gonna do.
We're, we're all in, I mean, otherwise that stuff's sitting there dormant, four streets, four inches, he's gonna sit there, everything's gonna just sit there. You gotta, you know, use, use the people that are out there, and that's what they do, I mean, that's what they do, they develop money.
And they want, they want something all around us.
They want, and, you know, they're gonna, what, they want, you know, they want.
You know, and we want.
Well, it's September the twenty fourth at six, and anybody else that, uh, can offer any help, you know, in terms of, you want to use that, great.
Yeah, I'm gonna go look at a little bit, so.
Yeah.
But that would be a great active point there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm submitting the motion to clear on twenty two, tourism development, helped by Senator Bob Farmer, tourism development, you're right, the county members are saying it's for a laptop, and they just submitted names without really an application, just then we received the application on the same two, Tom Lawson and Sue Ellen Weaver, so, um, and then somebody has anything to talk about that, is there a motion to support this too?
A motion to support this.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Debbs, second by Commissioner Murphy, any further discussion?
Got it, got it. Is Mr. Norman, talking to Mr. Dress, the look the iron horse, mud ball, and dress, or is he actually living in California?
Uh, that I'm really, I think they missed one there, but I'm not certain, I.
Only question I got.
I think they missed that.
There's the other one.
I, I believe that, um, Mr. Howard has stated that they relocated their, their family here from another state, I saw it.
All right, the only question I want to understand is, is, I think they did, I took a deposition in another state, which was one of their employees, and I, I, if I remember correctly, they related that they moved here, and if I'm remembering correctly.
And I, and we did make that, um, or the sign did make that a question on the application, when we discussed, um, that is a question number two, if they are a resident of Taylor County?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all residents say aye, all opposed sign sign, motion period, county staff items number eighteen, the board should consider approval of state housing and new partnership, that's the CHIL program, annual report for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and the local housing assistance certificate, as presented by County Booty Grant Coordinator, next man.
These are just the, um, annual reports that we have to submit, that we pay every year, and the, um, incentive certificate is required for us to receive every time of the year, that we butt it out once, the oldest grant every year, because we can have three active grants each year, and we'll be receiving them in early in October.
And I think what that is, um, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that basically about what we get every year from fifty?
Yeah.
Okay, great, any questions from the board? If not, is there a motion to approve?
A motion to say.
Motion by Commissioner Debbs, second by Commissioner Murphy, all residents say aye, all opposed sign sign, motion period, thank you. General business, uh, nineteen table, nineteen A, Commissioner Seager to discuss the road sometime, toll roads, extension project. As you all know, I was, uh, invited by Secretary Adams to be on the platform, I brought it to y'all, and I will be going, just coming, uh, next week, the first of next week, to the first, was the special meeting in Tampa. I did, the reason I put this on the agenda is at this point, it's tough with everybody, um, basically, when I go down there, do, do I have support from the board for this, uh, extension of this toll road that, and I do not know exactly where this road is gonna be, but it looks like it's proposed that it may come through Taylor County, along with, uh, Levy County, Jackson County.
Yes.
Uh, yes, and, uh, uh, LaFest, so, um, it just kinda needs to have a still a lot more, are going to support of this toll road coming through Taylor County potentially.
I support it.
Okay.
I support it for the resolution, I'm well aware that there are many students who've already talked to me to dump the toll road, and my question is, how can you not support them, they just want people to develop, you say, of counties? So I support it. That mean, I, I support it also, but also, we are members of Northridge Park Region Planning Council, and there are some of the planning council, won't the planning council take a stand against it? And that's nearly a lot way county, Marion County, they want, they don't want. I don't know why, they got plenty of people down there, they got plenty of money, they were kind of gonna have plenty of money, we don't have, there's a lot of things we don't have, and we need. Some says it's gonna drive, then something they were kind of, other says it's gonna be, just that mountain stuff. I'll tell you right now, we do need that mountain stuff, and I, I support it.
I, I did wanna piggyback on what you, you said, Commissioner Debbs, and I'm giving a lot of thought, in terms of, um, Marion County, and a lot of them, and the only thing, and I, I read what they said, but they didn't really give any, the big concrete reason why they didn't want it to come through there, but my, just the six pound seagull thought, but, I mean, look, they've already cut I seventy five, the vote is true, that's county, and I can see why, a lot of those people in differences, what the woman doesn't want to come through there, you know, it may, it might take a little bit away from them, but we don't, I don't have anything here that I can figure, it would pass away so much.
Let me, let me make a statement, I've been on the end, and I've been on the telephone, have a wreck on seventy five coming from Tampa before you get into Marion County, and they, they usually offer forty one, three oh one, twenty six, whatever road they is to get off on, and it takes four hours. I was down at the No Name Tom, it's illegal six, it took me twelve hours to get to Miami, to hold up. So, it, it is another avenue out of evacuation route, if something happened on the top end, and you're trying to get up this way.
Well, they do remember, not too awful long ago, when we had all the traffic coming through town, it bothered all our gas.
That's right.
And we didn't have gas, because a lot of people coming in, it bothered our gasers, and I remember when they did call me, there was a gas station, and it worked out right, and everybody ran down there and got a mile long line, and I paid to get some gas, but you had all these people, these evacuators coming through that were, you know, they were from two, so, yeah, with Stacy, I mean, they, you know, Stacy and stomach was bald, uh, two of the main reasons that, that, from what I've read, they wanna do that.
Okay, there's a middle plan to go to Marion County, oh, I thought that's, yeah, well, I bet, it's a long, long time to hear, pretty much, it's on the map, it's gonna take twenty one, you may have seen that recently.
There's three, three, oh, three, um, votes that they're.
Three, three, one, yeah, it'll be strange, we watch you on Florida Channel, you down there, uh, it isn't that many, we, we expect you'll stream it on the Florida Channel.
Oh, so, when I, I'll take a lot of notes and everything, and when I go to these meetings, I'll bring it back to the board. Also, you can go on the website and speak with yourself, I'm glad, but I'll, I'll try to keep, you know, from what I've been meaning, try to keep the, the board informed of what I know, and share with y'all, uh, so I'm going down there then with the assumption that our board is in favor right now of this road, we're, we're not a board that's saying like Marion County, we're not, no, we don't want, and we're not passing a revolution to say we don't want it, like they have either.
Okay, access to the baby exchange, they only just put it to you, the key to those is access interchange, that we can get on and off of, you know, that's a big thing.
Okay, absolutely.
I have to serve on that passport and turn it down, but it's big, big.
Little create economic inflation for us, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank y'all, county administrator items from the twenty, the county administrator to discuss informational items.
Uh, I have to stick here, um, to give us an update on the situation with flooding in Steenhazy. It worked except for, I, I would like to say that, um, as you all have seen, we had staff present in Steenhazy throughout the weekend, we had additional firefighters responding there, um, we have high water vehicle and a boat available for any rescue effort, um, and that was throughout the weekend. Uh, public, almost the entire public works department is in Steenhazy today, they're passing holes, our dock trucks are stockpiling materials today. It's too wet to put wet limestone out, but we, we are stockpiling the materials so that we will be ready, um, for additional work in Steenhazy and other areas. Uh, we have a crew doing some ditch work today, we started pumping yesterday, two spots, um, one is close to the fire station, and the other is Thirteenth Street. The reason we started there is that there's no outlet for that water, so it has to be pumped to, um, to other areas. Um, from what I understand, the water has receded, it looked good yesterday, I don't know what it looked like this morning, um, and I received a call from Representative Ricky Stroh yesterday, um, and, and he asked me, did I go down there? And I encouraged him to, because I felt like it would mean so much to the residents, so he did come to Steenhazy, um, met with staff, we toured him of the trouble spots, the area, um, and then he met with some of the residents, so I was very encouraged by his presence there.
He was reassuring the state.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and Chrissy, can you come forward and give emergency info?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're glad the rain stopped, it's like the sun may come out today, but you're glad of it. I want to thank everyone, we all work together like we always do during storms, the county, the state, U Commissioners, who are also down there. It's great to have that partnership, the Steenhazy River crested about four o'clock this morning, was at twenty two and seven, point, point seven four inch deep, so it did crest, it is coming down, you got a message up tent this morning, that the Indian Canyon River is also rising, it's still rising, it should crest, crest, crest this afternoon, so that will also come down. Uh, the pumping, like one said, is working, well, the dicky we're having now with the river, we have the aerial, after the flooding, you're gonna have a river rush, because all of the runoff from the woods, so that's made, but that, that should suffice then. Uh, damage assessments are being done by the property appraisers office, we wanna thank them for that, the entire staff were down there yesterday. What I'll do next is send those numbers to state, and we will see by hand if we can get some assistance here. If we cannot get individual assistance, we may turn on the SBA loans, which are something, you know, the business loans, we did not, we have any business affected, but homeowners can also get those loans, to help them. The curfew was lifted, it will be lifted tonight, the curfew has continued for three nights, but that will be lifted, Jeff had his money advise you of that. The shelter closed, we were able to hit Miss Rose back home, she was mad, she's back home.
Yeah, we're close, like, we're good, baby.
So, um, that's where we stand, we'll keep working, I have to start down there today handing out water, they're handing out cleaning supplies, carts, um, I'm gonna contact Red Cross and have, you know, see if individuals need help, we're gonna continue to be, have a presence down there. Any questions?
Yes, um, how many do you know, how many homes, uh, um, residents were flooded, and have they been displaced?
I had a list of about thirty homes that were affected, that does not mean that was major damage, I'm meeting with Mr. Ratliff when I leave this meeting, to get a correct number.
Okay, but they've been able to remain in, in their homes?
Some do, some have moved, uh, I heard that C H A gave, uh, some of the residents a place to stay, they are, you know, the community is great, it's people helping people, which that's what, you know, they should do, and they do.
Yeah, and I, I wanna point out too, and I don't know if you need, anybody don't see anything, but Kathy have, I mean, to tell you, they were very generous with.
Grant people.
But I mean, they, 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 they sent probably five of those big pans full, fried, good shrimp, and cheese bread, all, all kind of stuff, and I thought it was so generous. Um, I'd like to have their address, and I'd like to personally send them a, a thank you note, because that was, that was.
That's good. And we have a lot of businesses down there that operate in barbecue, they're gonna be here in a few days to feed the residents, so, if you hear of any needs, please let me know.
Yeah, I think they're great working the line up through this. Yeah, well, I, I also wanna thank y'all for your presence and everything you did, I know you were down there many hours, and a lot of other people, our staff, and I think that, 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 that we all came together so well, in a time like that, and that's what we should do, we're all in the same, we're all in the same thing. And so, so to speak, you know, I was just really impressed by the camaraderie, uh, down there, um, and, um, appreciate everything that they did. It looks like, with any, anytime you have a disaster or something like that, it's not always gonna be perfect, but we learn. Each time we have something that happens, we learn something, when you go back and review, then we can take that to the next time, and we learn this last time.
That's right.
So, um.
And we had a lot of practice lately in the past two years.
That's right, so, you know, we don't have it down pat, uh, and just before you, before that, um, we did have our director of emergency management also come down yesterday, Mr. Moskowitz, so he was pouring Dixie County and Taylor County, but he was amazed, just like I was, and, you know, when the sun came down yesterday, with the pumping, and it's wonderful, and happy, and we are glad of that.
That was my next question, are the pumps still on?
Yes. Pumped already in the morning.
Yeah. Did it work for pumping?
It is, without a problem, I was able to borrow one from a Florida county, but that's all we're doing, we're not putting nations into W A D O C, and we're doing hurricanes, because when we need something, we call neighboring counties, we, we pick up the telephone.
So, so from my understanding, you pump with, um, just shy of a million gallons per hour?
That's numbers I don't have.
Well, well, I'm just.
That's a lot of.
Free and a lot of, if you work with, a lot of.
Yeah, and you saw the rock yesterday within three hours.
Yes.
As we were saying, there really was.
But, so, from my understanding, um, when you have, when it was raining like it was Saturday and Sunday, it was raining very hard, our ditches were, were already overflowing, so the advice that we received from staff is to wait until it stops raining, instead of overwhelming, it'd be already full ditches, um, wait until Monday, until we turn the pumps on, so the water would have a place to go.
Wonderful.
Yeah, but if you hear any citizens that have any needs, please let me know, of course, I have a co-ed group of town happy, it's surrounding counties, and it's a volunteer system. I add them to contact you Baptist Association, after everything, the water goes down a little more, they will come out and help muck out the houses, and that's a local chapter here in Harry, so that's gonna help us a lot.
Is the red house still stationed there?
They are not, they left, but, I mean, they're gonna come back and do case work, based on these numbers that I get.
Thanks for listening, thank you, yes.
And they also are ever fresh to get?
I'm heading right down there soon as I'm leaving this meeting, it's not fresh yet.
My fellow citizens, eight forty five residents, sort of requests, citizens, where she live, um, I'm about to get her out, I mean, I don't have, and I can see if there's anything that, if there's any funds or anything that needs to be collected, that we can start.
Not since time, you know, we had that, um, call, we had a shelter there, and we started receiving donations, but we really don't have the facilities, you're gonna need to run that through one of the churches, I did know that somewhere, the Steve Booth Pantry, I can get you their information, because they are collecting items, so I did just make sure we sent one there.
Okay, uh, yeah, I think you're noticed, and, um, actually, I was working with, um, Karen, and she's, she does, she's in that space.
Exactly, yeah.
And she is, she put a couple collections aside, so I was wondering, if you knew any specific items that were.
I'll get it for you, I'll give it a call.
Okay.
Okay, well, I am headed down to, also, you can see, uh, the name to that area, just to, I can stand on and get off, to, to kind of see what's going on. I did talk with some boats down there, uh, last evening, and, uh, and so right then, as far as they knew, everything was okay, I did report Nambalay Road, I think we're not already turned that in, but I started looking at the other boats down there, and you see, and it, and you watch out, they're leaving, I'll report to you later this afternoon, it's, it's very expensive, they're happy if I need help, they can help. If, if they're expensive, St. Hasty, if I need help, they, they can help me, the road department. Um, okay, um, anything else, uh, do we have anything else? Okay, nine twenty-one, comments and concerns from public, from all of the other houses. Anybody here against you? Come over. Say your name and address.
Uh, hey, one caller, from Sac County Electric, Alzada, Idaho, from Florida. I just wanted to stop by this morning and remind you guys about annual meeting. We're a month away, September twenty-first, at Madison County High School. Registration begins at nine AM, meeting business meeting at ten. We will have entertainment again, a break feature coming. We will be giving away a truck again this year, along with a hundred other tour buses. So, we encourage you to come, and I encourage you to spread the word. And as we update, I remember something's going on at the co-op, okay?
If they don't want to, go off, then we'll go.
No, you do not have to be a member to attend. You do have to be a member to get a door crash ticket, and then to get a bill permit, because you do not have to be a member to attend them.
Vote.
What, and you have something on the agenda to be voted on, but after now, we do not, so. But, yeah, to, to vote, to get a door crash ticket and all that, because you just being a little bit, you don't have to, but you can.
Well, thank you, thank you.
It's a December twenty-first. It's always a third Saturday, isn't it?
Never.
It always is, you know, Florida plays, you think?
Always, it's always the first day, or any season or something, it's always the same or something. Bye.
You know, I can remember many, many years ago, my friend Paul Haggis. We went over there every year, and I, I certainly was saying the same. Uh, it was closer to downtown than, than that area, but I remember he, he loaded us a lot of, of units, and we went and spent a whole day over there.
Well, good, it's also, it's a great family event. We have separate kids, duties for them, some special guests. We'll have community booths set up from different organizations in all three of the communities. These are giving out their information and their duties and things, so. It'll be a great morning. We'll have breakfast, and all that good stuff, so please, please, to come and spread the word on that, okay?
Thank you for being here, morning. Anyone else have anything to follow this?
Uh, I've got several things. One, uh, today's church had an open house, I think probably afternoon, their usual office, five thirty, five, five thirty, but that'll be the paper I'm bringing, the, uh, the, 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 the. The other, we had a request from Pam and from one of the diversity, uh, walking lives would be in fourteen county areas in the ninth and thirteenth, that can be, be, be geographic, be, be, and talk with industrial lifestyle side out the first pan, and about the chamber, probably not, not getting it. The other thing we were trying to get another, uh, ethics workshop, we've got a personal line that's to do it. I was, I was saying about Pam, I was, you know, we were the host of the, of the thing. You can't get it for those, and they do it this time, this is about a third, fourth, you know, the chart. The same thing with Gerald, just give us five for the train you do, and you play a presentation. I like to fix this thing, and we would give that a, give that a, and.
Yeah, and he'll, what's his, what's his name, I heard, but, uh, I, I believe he told me that they normally get fifteen, they have a fifteen hundred dollar position. They get a little wind and all, he's happy, we can send five hundred, and we can't use these to get some more lessons.
Well, I, I think, yeah, I think he did, yeah.
Well, that'd be a, that's just a, economics are good part of that, and going off, they, you, Dana did real good last time. Didn't have a good participation, but I thought that this thing was there, and, uh, some of his business, you see, he, he thinks, he thinks it's a tax collector, and counter mission, and all those places, they're real, they're real.
Well, we did date, a date, so.
That's them, that's them, that's them, yeah.
September ten.
I was there, I had permanent other Dan. You, you going to work with Dana?
Yeah, I'm wanting to see that Pam, to get that, and just the one, but anyway, we need all people, if, not just the left and the right, and the city, they need to be having all to, you know, whatever that's worth, and working, and that.
What time is it all?
Fifty in the morning, I think, I think I have some of mine to play up, but listen, we'll, Dana, we'll work all the detail, but maybe just want to learn that that's something we've, that's been dreamed of, we need to do it again. He might have been there for once, and he, he does good.
And he's great, or who is that?
Yeah, and then, then, happy to be a distance, so, and younger, I'll give that, he takes front there, anyway.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, we're going to go to item twenty-two, board information on items, Commissioner Murphy?